I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. If you would please join me as the Wildcat Company Navy Junior ROTC Cadets present our colors and then we will lead you in the pledge to the flight. And you may be seated. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. First item is some of the good news that have been taking place in our schools. And Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
All right, I have Willowbrook. The third grade student Lucas Manuel won the 2021-22 Tennessee STEM Innovative Network statewide challenge for elementary students. Lucas reimagined how to reuse train and railroad tracks in Tennessee to convert them into magnetic railroad transportation systems for traveling in Tennessee. Lucas utilized the EDP to plan out and create a physical model of his design solution prototype for reusing infrastructure such as railroad systems throughout the state that utilize electrically powered trains that collect energy through the form of solar clean energy instead of fossil fuel resources which pollute the air. Lucas will be receiving the Blue Sky Award of Innovation at the end of May. Third and fourth grade Willowbrook students senate officers competed, or completed, sorry, calm corner projects to be put in every room for the 22-23 school year. These will help teachers with trauma-informed practices. The robotics club received a $3,000 grant or donation from Mesa Associates to support implementation of the club. The Oak Ridge Family Resource Center received a $7,500 grant from the Oak Ridge Breakfast Rotary Club Foundation grant for mental health resources for students. The ORRC and Friends of Literacy provided take-home family literacy packs for the K-2 students. And Joe Bruce has been chosen to receive the ORRC Paul Harris Fellow Award for Service Above Self from the Rotary. Willowbrook Track Team also participated in an inter-school track meet. Over 40 third and fourth grade students have been practicing in various events with help from the Robertson Track Team. They were able to show off their talents in front of family and friends at the RMS Track.
Mr. Stevens?
I have the pleasure of Robertson. Mr. John Spratlin was recently selected to receive the East Tennessee Historical Society Teaching Excellence Award. This award is to celebrate the great work conducted by individuals and organizations across the region. The award ceremony will be held on June 7th at the East Tennessee Historical Society. And Mr. John Spratlin is with us this evening.
Ms. McLean?
All right, I have Woodland. Woodland's first LEGO League held its first annual Sumo Bot Tournament on April 28th. We had a ton of fun watching the third and fourth graders work together on a small team to build Sumo Bots and compete in a century-old sport made modern. Although there were many creative designs and it was a close competition, the team who engineered the Sumo Bot named Tank came out on top to become Woodland's first Sumo Bot champion. Also at Woodland, the Y-12 engineers visited the third and fourth graders on May 17th. The student learned about what it takes to become an engineer. They participated in several hands-on activities involving magnets and energy and explored how simple concepts can be made to change the world.
Ms. Agel?
From Oak Ridge High School, ORHS art students won first, second, and third place at Casa Ola Student Art Exhibit. Shay Mason, Oak Ridge High School student, earned her Microsoft Office Specialist Certification in Word 2019. Five ORHS students earned the Microsoft Access Expert 365 2019 Certification. Twenty-seven students earned the Microsoft Office Specialist 365 2019 PowerPoint Certification. Fourteen Oak Ridge High School students have successfully completed the requirements to be recognized as a Microsoft Office Specialist, associate by learning, earning certifications in Word, Excel, and PowerPoint 2019. Three Oak Ridge High School seniors have been admitted to the service academies. Beatrice Shay will go to the United States Air Force Academy, Kayden Upgraff, the United States Military Academy at West Point, and Jamison Upgraff, United States Military Academy at West Point. Congratulations are due to that. It's rare to have even one, we have three.
My good news comes from our Wildcat Navy Junior ROTC. First Cadet Lieutenant Andrea Range was selected as the Oak Ridge Navy Junior ROTC Cadet of the Year on Friday, May the 6th. Her exceptional leadership with the battalion's, let me get this where I can see it better, need better glasses, with the battalion, sorry, with the battalion's orienting team has led to three first-place finishes, two second-place finishes this year. As the battalion's supply officer, she assists the instructors with maintaining orderedness, cleanliness of over $150,000 worth of uniform, items, and Navy equipment. Her direct contributions to the Wildcat Battalion was instrumental in Oak Ridge earning the Area 9 Distinguished Unit for the fourth consecutive year. Now, they also have another portion, but I'm going to save that as we move into our next item. Each year, the Oak Ridge Board of Education through Oak Ridge High School has begun selecting Oak Ridge School Student Recognition Award. The person who receives this is then submitted to the Tennessee School Board Association to hopefully be selected as the East District Student of the Year. And if selected there, then on to the state to be selected as the State Student Recognition Award recipient of the year. So before I go on, I'm going to ask our vice chair, Ms. Laura McLean, principal at Oak Ridge High School, Dr. Adams, and our recipient, Ms. Sasha Laminsky, to please come forward. So this wasn't planned, this just kind of showed up and fit into what we're doing tonight. So I'm going to read this first and then Dr. Adams is going to take over with some additional comments. This year, a new annual award was created in honor of Sasha Lumansky. Because of her selfishness and always putting her peers' interests and needs above her own, Sasha received the Rihanna Lucas Leadership Award as well. This award was created in honor of Rihanna Lucas, the ORHS NJROTC's first cadet commanding officer. Sasha is an amazing young lady, evidenced by her being one of 72 high school students nationwide to be selected for the Air Force AIM-HI Flight Program. She has also been selected to attend summer seminars at the U.S. Naval Academy and the Coast Guard Academy this summer. She was selected to be the Cadet Commanding Officer for Area 9 East Summer Leadership Academy, leading 250 cadets from the Navy Junior ROTC programs throughout Tennessee, Alabama, Kentucky, and Arkansas. Sasha has also been chosen by the Area 9 Manager, Commander Murf Dahl, as the Area 9 Cadet of the Year. In addition to her many NJROTC and future military accolades, she has been selected as class president and student council president for the 2022-2023 school year. She is also a member of the Oak Ridge High School cheer and swim teams. Wow. Dr. Adams, you can follow that.
Well, this is obviously a well-deserving award. Sasha is probably, and I hate to say this because we have some great kids, but she's a unicorn. With all of the activities she's involved in, her volunteer hours are incredible. She gives up her weekends, she gives up her evenings. We've got a loaded class, a junior class of exceptional students, and for her to stand out among the rest, it's incredible. She deserves this award, she's a leader in the hallways, in the classroom, cheerleading, swimming, NJROTC. I mean, she is truly a selfless individual and we are so, so proud of her. She is the definition of what a portrait of a graduate looks like. So she is a model student and we absolutely love Sasha. She's by far one of my favorite kids I've ever had the pleasure of working with.
So please help me congratulate her and wish her success. And we hope that she'll come back and we'll be recognizing her as the State Student of the Year. I hope I wasn't putting any, I hope I wasn't putting any pressure on you, but from reading all this, I think you can handle it. Next, if you've been paying attention and been with us this year, you know that we've also selected nominees from the schools for Volunteers of the Month. And then the board decided upon a Volunteer of the Year who will be submitted to the Tennessee School Board Association. We hope to be selected as East District Volunteer of the Year and go on and be selected as a State Volunteer. So I'll ask Ms. Agel to come up, Vice Principal Ms. Free from Robertson to come up, and our Volunteer of the Year from Robertson, Mr. Jake Greer, to please come forward. So there are all kinds of categories that your volunteer has to fit. I want to share those categories with you and to let you know that Mr. Greer fits in all of these categories. Has made an outstanding contribution to a Tennessee school district through volunteer service. Has exhibited exemplary leadership, creativity, cooperation, and hard work in his service to a school. Engaged in the creation, organization, and/or mobilization of volunteers, groups, and resources that are involved in projects benefiting the school district. Demonstrated sustained commitment to meeting school district needs. Utilized unique and creative approaches to meeting needs. Helped with a special project or ongoing activities. These are all characteristics that have been demonstrated by our Volunteer of the Year. So again, please help us recognize and congratulate and wish Mr. Greer success as he moves on to the next level. Congratulations. Well, we come to the next part of the agenda, which is not the most exciting part for the members of the board, but probably is very exciting for those who we're now going to be recognizing, and that is some of our Oak Ridge Schools retirees. These individuals, as you will hear, have donated, and I use the term donated because if we took all the hours that a teacher gets or puts forth in their career, they're donating a lot of their time to the successes their students have in their classrooms. So it's with a great honor that we recognize each of these individuals tonight. And Dr. Borchers is going to identify a few more tidbits about each one of them. And I'll be presenting them with a certificate. And PTSA is also going to be presenting, who's going to be doing that? Mike?
Oh, I...
What did I say? Oh, sorry. I'm reading too much. Yes, there is. So are you going to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms., okay, Elaine's going to help also. Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, a number of staff members, 17 total, are retiring from the system this year. Some have chosen not to be recognized at the meeting tonight, and as much as we'd like to acknowledge their service, we've honored that request. However, we do have, I'm supposed to have four, I only see three right now, we'll see if our fourth one comes in, outstanding staff members tonight that will be recognized. So when I say your name, please come up to the podium and I'll make a few comments about each one of you. And as Mr. Philauer said, he and Mike will be giving them some recognition for their service. So first up, Martha Damiano. Martha, if you would come up. Martha began her orchestra career teaching at Oak Ridge Schools in 1971 at all four elementary schools, both middle schools and Oak Ridge High School. She was, she has completed the last five years full-time at Jefferson Middle School. She's also enjoyed taking students to competitions at Dollywood, Six Flags, and Kings Island with two middle schools at each grade level. Martha also appreciated the opportunity to get to know the other students as they might perform together in high school. Martha went on to say that as the orchestra director at Jefferson Middle School, the junior band and orchestra clinics has always been supported and the students have always done well. Martha has really enjoyed watching the students grow musically, seeing her students go on to career both as performers and in the music industry, as well as previous students staying in touch. Martha's plans for retirement are to continue to play in the symphony and teach private lessons. She has served as the personnel manager for the symphony and now is serving on the executive board for Oak Ridge Civic Music Association. She will also help with educational outreach on behalf of the symphony. Finally, she certainly will travel more than she has in the past three years and says her dog will see a lot more of her. Martha hopes the Oak Ridge Schools will continue to be a strong supporter of the performing arts. She feels that for many students, band, orchestra, and chorus are the highlights of their day. Congratulations Martha for your 51 years as an educator. All right, now we're missing, unless Gary is hiding behind a door and he's going to pop out, is Gary Grimp, do you know Mr. Lay?
They are having fourth grade graduation at Willowbrook and we have activities at Glenwood, so that's why our numbers are down some.
Okay, very good. Well, then we will go on and honor Deborah Hibbin. Deborah has been teaching in Oak Ridge since 1978, beginning back when Cedar Hill Elementary was a school in our district. Deborah has taught special education for 44 years for the Oak Ridge Schools. In 1984, Deborah moved to Willowbrook Elementary and never looked back. This is where she will end her career teaching. Deborah has enjoyed her job through her 44 years as a teacher, her favorite subject being reading, as well as being able to teach so many students all these years. Deborah is now seeing and teaching former students grandkids. Being a native Oak Ridger, she says that she has felt honored to do something positive that impacts Oak Ridgers even in a small way. She believes that best things in the world is to see a struggling student become successful. She's going to miss the friends, students, parents, and everything at Willowbrook. Deborah plans to relax, read, spend time with her family and dog, and complete the small projects that she has not been able to do. Congratulations Deborah for your 44 years as an educator.
I saw one of my students right there.
And then finally tonight, we have Dr. Roger Ward. Roger came to Oak Ridge Schools in 2005 and took the job as Linden Elementary Principal. He previously taught nine years at other schools before joining our district. One of Roger's major career highlights was implementing the Washington DC trip for fourth grade students. Also, in 2018, Roger was named Oak Ridge Principal of the Year. Then in 2020, he earned his doctorate degree. Roger has made many friends and professional colleagues while living and working in Oak Ridge. He says he is now better for knowing all of them. Roger will tell you that Oak Ridge is an amazing place to live, raise a family, and work. He has nothing but praise for the city and the school system. Roger is not retiring completely from what he knows and does best. He plans to continue his career at a school, as a school administrator, by relocating to Aiken, South Carolina, where he will finish out his career at Millbrook Elementary School as the principal. After some years from now, he will retire to the beach house that he and Michelle have built on Fripp Island, South Carolina. This will include golfing, trips to the beach, and bird watching from his back porch. For now, he will be two hours away from his forever home and will use the weekends and school breaks to enjoy. Even though he and Michelle have relocated, he still has family in the area and you will see them about town. He is incredibly grateful for his time in Oak Ridge and will continue to watch and celebrate all the amazing things happening in Oak Ridge. Congratulations Roger on your 17 years as an educator.
Dr. Borchers, do you have handy there the year numbers again?
Yes, I do. Martha was 51 years, Deborah was 44 years, and then 17 with Dr. Ward.
And if our other one had been here?
And Gary was 12. Thirty-two total for Dr. Ward, let's go with 32.
That's, okay.
I'm just reading the teleprompter, Dr. Borchers.
You had 48, so. Did you add with the 48, 131? Okay, I'd like those individuals, now I'm not going to embarrass you. Would you stand up again, the three of you, please? Now, I want everybody else to think about this for just a minute. If you calculate this, if each, if these three have a total of 131 years, how many students have passed through these three people in 131 years? I don't think I can calculate that high. I mean, that's just amazing. And we have a lot of staff members who retire with years of service such as you all have served. And those numbers are incredible. What, what an impact a teacher has. So thank you again for everything, and again, help me in congratulating them and wishing them the best. Do we have anybody else we need to recognize before we move on? Okay. Next is our public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. If you wish to do that, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time?
My name is Martin McBride and I live at 954 West Outer Drive in Oak Ridge. I'd like to talk tonight about the proposal from the Oak Ridge 85 Celebration Committee that we're going to be coming out with shortly publicly to have three major civil rights awards, civil rights monuments erected in honor of the wonderful Oak Ridge 85 students who, of course, were the very first to break the color barrier in southeastern schools. They were the first ones to have a major victory against Jim Crow segregation back in 1955. They're incredible pioneers, their courage is just inspiring. And I wanted to, before I went any further, thank you, the board, for your amazing leadership in the celebration over the last three years. As you may remember, we started here, right here, back in 2019 with a proposal that you get involved with this celebration. And since your involvement and your leadership, the celebration just took off. And it was amazing what we were able to accomplish, given COVID and all the other restrictions which you are well aware of. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your wonderful leadership. And also, thank you to the teachers and the staff for all the help that we got over that time. It was just an amazing celebration. I'd like to do an overview tonight, quick overview of these monuments that we're proposing, and then other distinguished members of the Celebration Committee will come up and talk about some of the specific monuments for you. We are suggesting two monuments for the city of Oak Ridge. One to the two co-founders, what we consider the co-founders of the Oak Ridge School System, one of which, of course, is Dr. Blankenship. And the other one is Arizona Officer. Ms. Officer was hired in 1946 to start the black school system, black portion of Oak Ridge School System. And I cannot even imagine what a black lady in 1946, at the height of Jim Crow, was up against in terms of, you know, her challenges. But she did a great job and one of her children was actually one of the Oak Ridge 85 students who broke the color barrier subsequently in 1955. The second monument is also, is directly to the Oak Ridge 85 and where it also is a multiracial monument. We want to have the names, of course, of all the 85 students, but we'd like to have three life-size bronze statues of the three... three life-size bronze statues of the three pioneering black basketball players who broke the color barrier in the southeast. They were very first black students to be allowed to compete in all-white public school systems throughout the southeast. And with them, we'd also like three life-size statues of supporting white players. So, it again is a multiracial theme and the theme of everyone coming together to achieve this wonderful accomplishment. Just in passing, I'll note that they broke the barrier because of their courage in 1955. It was six years before the University of Tennessee even admitted a black student. That happened in 1961. There were three UT black students admitted. You had 85 come into your school system in 1955. And it was 16 years later before two black players were allowed on the UT, University of Tennessee basketball team. So, again, you were pioneers here. And we would like to have two major monuments here in Center City, Oak Ridge, that commemorate that. The third monument would be in DOE Headquarters, the rotunda, the entrance to the DOE Headquarters Building at Forestall, right across the street from the Smithsonian in Washington DC. That monument, we were proposing two life-size statues of students carrying their books, a black student and a white student, along with granite pla, bronze plaques and a granite monument that describes the incredible Oak Ridge 85 desegregation, plus DOE's major role in directing that that desegregation occur. This will give the Department of Energy, again, remind them of their close linkage with this school system, and also will provide the Oak Ridge 85 with some wonderful national publicity. So, right now, we are proposing this. We have gone before the city council. We have asked them for permission to use some city property for these, the sites of these monuments. We're waiting to hear back from them, and then within the next week or so, we will have a press release. But we wanted to come and thank you and brief you first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Martin, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
My name is Rose Weaver, and I live at 142 Hendrix Drive, and I'm just gonna expound a little bit on the first monument. Education has always been the fabric of the Scarborough African-American community, and to that reason is why this monument will reflect the significance. A monument celebrating the two co-founders of the Oak Ridge School System, Dr. Alden H. Blankenship and Mrs. Arizona Officer. Blankenship was, of course, the creation of the all-white schools in Oak Ridge in 1943, and Arizona Officer who created the curriculum recruiting black teachers to the Scarborough Elementary School in 1956, 46, which also led to the first black high school in the city of Oak Ridge. I'm compassionate about the monument specifically because Arizona Officer was my elementary school principal. And I remember walking the streets in the Scarborough community, needing to have someone to tutor, to serve as a mentor or role model for me, and Mrs. Officer was right there within length of where I could reach out and talk with her. So, that, to me, is very compassionate from my heart. Although not yet recognized, historical speaking, this statue will serve as a lasting legacy because we know that education is the impetus for the secret city, and we know that education is what Oak Ridge is known for. The monument also symbolizes the foundation of the Oak Ridge Schools' excellence today and would be a bold commitment to celebrating the overlooked contributions of the Scarborough African-American community. But more than that, it would serve as a lasting contribution of the cultural landscape of black and white communities working together, and would postulate to our young people and their children, and their children's children, how important education was to the foundation of even what we would call the making of the atomic bomb. So, the suggested location is going to be between the Oak Ridge History Museum and the Oak Ridge High School. As we know, the Oak Ridge High School is one of the landmark schools that was desegregated in 1955. So, we're hoping that the schools, the educational system in Oak Ridge will embrace, when we began working on this monument, that could be a lasting legacy for the city of Oak Ridge. Thank you very much for supporting us in all of our efforts, and thank you for being a part of what we've already started.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Spratlin, 201 Erie Course Road. I'm here to talk about the second monument, which he mentioned, which he mentioned was the sports monument of the three black players that were on the basketball team in 1955. Trying to talk and write. But anyway, I previously handed them a packet called Tender Warriors. This was a book that went around talking to students that desegregated different schools across America, and they interviewed two player, two people here. One was Archie Lee, who came and spoke at our reunion a few months ago, and then the other one was Lawrence Graham, who is now Dr. Ahmed Alameez. But they interviewed them about, you know, the situation in Oak Ridge and desegregation. And, but before I get to Lawrence, I'm gonna read something from the New York Times that document what we talking about. Not only did Oak Ridge Schools integrate schools, but we integrated sports. And I wanna read the first paragraph to you. "December 3, two Negroes went in as substitutes for Oak Ridge High School basketball team tonight. This move marked the first break in segregation in a Tennessee school or a college sporting event," which Martin alluded to, the UT, a little bit later. But we excellent in a lot of ways, not just education, so we need to hone it. And then it also ends with this paragraph. "A.C., the Atomic Energy Commission is the first Tennessee community to comply with the Supreme Court's anti-segregation decision." And this was an article out of the New York Times. And the reason I gave you the packet, 'cause we say three students, but to me, I like to know people's name and faces. As an African-American, it's important for me to put a name with that, not just say three students. So, the three students are Henry Fred Gwynn, which his granddaughter, Jada Gwynn, played a couple of years ago, she was a Miss Basketball finalist, and his grandson now is, just graduated, Kel Slater, who was able to play. But Henry Fred Gwynn was one of the players, and like I said, Lawrence Graham at the time, his name now is Dr. Ahmed Alameez. But they, the book Tender Warriors interviewed Lawrence in Oak Ridge, and it talked about him, if you competitive at all, he talked about not being able to play in all the games because the other schools would not play against black players. So, they had to have permission in order to play, and most of the schools turned them down when they had to go to away game. So, they interviewed him in this book called Tender Warriors, and he talked about that. And I'm gonna read this little quote real quick. Says, "Our coach is real nice. He calls me before the game and lets me know whether I can play or not. Once we were going to an away game, he phoned and asked him if it would be all right to bring me along. They said okay, but before we got to leave, the coach called again and said the fans didn't want me. I was just ready to go. The boys on the team, they came up and told me they were hurt because I didn't get to go. I didn't feel any way bad because these things happened before, and they will happen again. The same situation occurs in baseball." And I'm a catcher, but wrote that some minor league teams were interested in seeing him play, so maybe the next time he'll get to play. And then the other thing I gave you was Robert Berry, he was on the freshman team, but basically, I gave them pictures of the players with their name and faces, so not just say three black players. It's actual Henry Fred Gwynn, Lawrence Graham, and Robert Berry. But again, we thank you for all your support, and we hope that Oak Ridge will be excellent in this way too, to cement this, 'cause we are excellent in a lot of ways, and we need to make sure that we display that to the world, 'cause this is not just local, but it's state and national history. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm Erin. Hey, everybody. I never come in and talk. I just got a lot of energy, Ms. Doctor.[1224.65][1224.65](LAUGHING). So, I'm gonna do mine very quick, 'cause I know time is money, money is time. But I am Vanessa Spratlin. I am also at 201 Erie Course Road. I can do things at the same time.[1236.76][1236.76](LAUGHING). So, I'm gonna tell you about the future of the monuments. I want the future to mean the celebration and healing, 'cause that's what we need to focus on. I know a lot of you all don't think of the courageous times that they went through, but it's important that we remember it. But I want you to think about the future. If you think about some of the graduates you all have already had, Nikki Vargas, Nikki Codwell, who graduated from Oak Ridge High School, is president of the Las Vegas Aces WNBA, right here in Oak Ridge. Mike Codwell, who was a graduate of Oak Ridge High School, is now the defensive coordinator at the Jacksonville Jaguars, who won the Super Bowl last year, Oak Ridge. And our very own baby, T. Higgins. He could've said Clemson. He went on national TV and said, "Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge High School." I was like floored. So, we have a lot to be proud of. So, you say, "Why is it important?" I say, "Why not?" I mean, this is a proud moment for us. Just think, think about the legacy you leave. In 65 years, it'll be 20, the class of 2087. Now, I won't be here, but they will be the class of 2087. What legacy do we wanna leave for them? These'll be footprints. So, let's be the change we wanna see. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I only have one comment. Martin, John, and Rose, y'all need to pick it up and get her enthusiasm a little bit when y'all come up and speak, because, you know, it just really gets everybody a little more excited about it.[1341.01][1341.01](LAUGHING). Thank you all, and again, we appreciate what you're doing and look forward to what lies ahead. Thank you. Okay, we move there to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Motion passes unanimously. Moving next to items for action, we'll be dealing with our budget on second reading and approval of the budget. So, item A is FY23 Budget Appendix C, 18 rates for substitute teachers, a second reading. You wanna explain why we're doing it this way, Dr. Borchers, or you want me to?
Why don't you take a shot at it, since you're impacted by it?
Okay. We, the reason, there are two sections here voting on the budget, is because this particular section on substitute teachers is an increase in pay for substitute teachers. I have substituted some this year, and Ms. Agel's husband also substitutes, so we felt it best that we recuse ourselves and abstain on this vote, and so that's why we've had to do it in two segments. You wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's perfect. Yes.
So, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Well, we don't abstain. I guess we do, don't we, with conflict? I guess it is conflict.[1477.65][1477.65](LAUGHING). Travis, we need your assistance up here for a moment. There we go. Motion passes, three, four, two abstentions. I'm glad it's not me, it's usually me.[1569.01][1569.01](LAUGHING). Well, thank you. Appreciate it. So, we'll move to item B, adoption of the FY23 budget on second reading. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the adoption of FY23 budget.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, we've been at this about six, seven months. We've had a series of meetings this month. We presented to the city council, had a first reading, did line by line, and now we're here for second reading.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Next item on the agenda is FY22 Budget Transfer Number Five. This is a first reading. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Budget Transfer Number Five.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
This is, you saw the high-level summary from Ms. Van Dyke there, but this has to do with year-end realignment of general fund salary and benefits, establishes a FY22 Summer Learning Camp grant, and Tennessee system grant budgets, and then other routine budget transfers and revisions.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item D, FY23 Student Class Fees. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Student Class Fees.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
As you can see from the handout, we have the fees that are there, and as we talk about every year, this is the requested but not required fee list for the Oak Ridge Schools. And I think the only changes you'll see there is for the high school, there's some just small changes.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item E, FY23 Food Service Contract Renewal. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Food Service Contract Renewal.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
Just a couple of things in the memo there on the first page. This is the fifth year of the contract with Airmark, and for our food service program management, there's some slight increases in the management and administrative fees here, but I think that bottom paragraph where it's... bottom paragraph where it says there'll be an adult price increase of 15 cents, but no increase for student meals in this contract.
Comments or questions? Mr. Stevens?
The only comments I have is a huge thank you. The service that they have performed and especially during the time of this time where we're dealing with the pandemic has been outstanding, and we greatly appreciate your efforts, your staff's efforts, and recommendations that help us provide good food for the students. And as we all know, few can learn on an empty stomach. And so it's so very important, and the services that have been provided are great. So just wanted to give you a major thumbs up for that.
Thank you very much.
Jen, something you might want to work on?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get my straight face on to say this. I was watching something on the news the other night, and they were talking about this group of cafeteria ladies. I don't know if anybody happened to see that. And then one of the things they did to increase student participation in the lunch programs, they started putting out videos of the cafeteria workers singing.
Okay.
And doing various things. They were using TikTok and all the other social media. So, you know, that might be something to think about for future preparation to test the singing abilities of your staff members.
I could always ask them.
That was really cleverly done. It was really cleverly done.
Lunch lady karaoke night or something.
Yeah, well, there you go. That's exactly the way they started. But again, I would reiterate what Mr. Stevens said. Thank you, particularly the extra efforts that went into making sure our young people were fed during the time when they weren't in school and so forth. So we appreciate that. And I think the fact that the contract is extended for the length of time shows the work that goes into it. So we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
No, Ms. Agel.
Dr. Borchers, do we have any problem with parents getting confused about whether lunch fees are requested, not required?
Not that I know of. Mr. Lady, have you heard any of that?
I haven't heard that there's any confusion that lunch fees are not optional. I mean, of course, now we have students who will qualify for free or reduced. Other students are required to pay. Now, since the pandemic, we have been providing all lunches free, breakfasts and lunches free at all of our buildings. That will change this next school year, which we assume has the potential to be problematic. Just because parents have grown used to not paying for meals, it's not in their budget. We know that this is not the best time as far as economics and prices. So, so we will assume that may be a challenge next year.
That's a good point. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to renew the food service contract. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item F, is Ben Martin Track Upgraded Surfacing System. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of a change order for the Ben Martin Track Project in the amount of $205,600 for the upgrading of the track surfacing system.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
And I think Mr. Thacker was talking to the board prior to the meeting night, but we're upgrading the surface to basically, it's kind of a, you can't penetrate it with water, moisture, and things like that. And with the new drain system that Mr. Thacker has with the new track, that water will just slide off into that trough, if you will, and really should extend the years of the track past this base layer of the track for about five or six years. So we're hoping that this buys us 10, 12 years of a track before we'd have to resurface it. We think it's worth the extra additional price, given what we're paying already, to extend it five, six years makes sense.
Comments or questions? Alan, Ms. McLean wants a little show and tell?
Sure. In the base bid of the project was this type of surfacing. It's a latex product. It is not UV protected, and this is about twice the thickness of what we would be getting in the base bid because this is actually off the old track, and this is two layers. We looked at the Binion surface, which is, this is the 100 surface. This is permeable by water and snow, so it will have a little bit longer life than this because it is UV protected, but it would break down a lot faster. This is the Binion 200 surface, which has an extra coating on the top, which makes it water impermeable, excuse me, I can't hardly say that word, and allows the water to cast off into the trough drain system and will practically double the life of the track surface as well as protect the base asphalt that we, that we'll be installing.
So is this going to add to the timeline?
Just a little bit. Our current timeline, based on weather delays and other project delays that we've experienced at this point, would have us at the mid-July point. They're telling me this will be early August for us to be able to, this year, yes. And if you've been, had a chance to go out there, it's moving very quickly.
Thank you, Alan.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Don't leave, Alan. Since the new one is water impermeable, will that make it more slippery if it's raining during a track meet, or is it rugged enough that the students will not slip?
It's very rugged, so it has plenty of traction to it. But in addition, in the track, you're actually, they'll be wearing their spikes. So this, this actually is the same type of surfacing that you'll find at most of the competitive tracks that's going down. And even UT's track is very similar to this.
Mr. Stevens?
I think after it's all set and ready to go, that first meet, we need to have a party.
I believe the coaches are already planning.
That's already in the mix, yes.
Thank you, Alan. Motion on the floor is approval of the Ben Martin Track Upgrade Surfacing System. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item G, Purchase of Baseball Bleachers. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of four sets of bleachers for the baseball program from Technology International in the amount of $49,200.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
This is just another upgrade to the baseball complex. There's a large plan in mind, but this is just one step forward. So replacing those old bleachers with this new stadium seating will definitely help the foundational improvements of the complex.
Comments or questions? Motion on the floor is approval of the purchase of the baseball bleachers. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, it's approval of the Jefferson Middle School American History Field Trip. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the JMS American History Field Trip on September 30th through October 3rd.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
I know this is always a fun topic. Every year, this comes before the board, and I know we've got some Jefferson folks here. If there are any questions about this coming trip.
Comments or questions? How many years?
Forty-seven, forty-seven years.
That's, that's in the day of and time where a lot of schools don't even want to put the time in having field trips or events like this anymore. That's outstanding to continue to do that.
How many students?
About eight, eight students.
Okay. Great. Motion on the floor is approval of Jefferson American History Field Trip. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the Willowbrook International Club. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the International Club at Willowbrook Elementary School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
Again, just wonderful that we've got staff willing to be organizers and to help with clubs like this. And this club's purpose is to celebrate the cultural diversity at Willowbrook.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Do you have a question? Nope. Please cast your vote on approval of the Willowbrook International Club. Motion passes unanimously. Item J, Board Policy 5.311 Bereavement Leave. This is a first and second reading on this policy. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.311 Bereavement Leave.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, we discussed this during our presentations of budget, and this is something we've worked with OREA on and feel that we're finally ready to be able to do this. I won't read through the entire policy, but you can see there in line six, per occurrence, up to two days of paid bereavement leave shall be granted to Oak Ridge Schools' employees. So we're, we're glad we can be at this position to offer this policy on first and second reading tonight.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Board Policy 5.311, a first and second reading. Motion passes unanimously. Item K, FY23 IDA Partnership for Systemic Change K-12 Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 IDA Partnership for Systemic Change K-12 Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
As you can see from the attachment, this is a competitive grant, and what we're looking to do is to purchase a new seven-passenger van to help support the transition school-to-work program for our students with moderate to severe disabilities. And then just also on the second page of that handout, just want to point out the Oak Ridge Schools' Transition School-to-Work Partners that we have. Just some really great things that our special ed department and Mr. Schultz are doing, and just hopeful we can get this grant because there's a lot of great things happening out in our community for these kids.
Comment, Ms. McLean?
I talked to Mr. Schultz about this at our last meeting, and he can't be here. But I want to highlight the businesses that are taking our, our students on. The American Museum of Science and Energy, Anderson County Animal Shelter, Chicken Salad Chick, Food City, Sweet Life Pet Resort, The Holiday Inn Express, Millburn Bakery, Panera Bread, Wendy's, Bojangles, Oak Ridge Nursery School, The Grove Church, Zaxby's, Oak Ridge Floral, McDonald's, Billy's Timeout Deli, and Outback. And a lot of these positions, our kids are getting paid to work in, at these businesses. So if you get a chance, please recognize that when you visit these businesses. This is a really great program, and I'm so happy that we have 32 kids involved in it.
That's good. Thank you. Great. If you'd please cast your vote, approval of the FY23, 23 IDA Grant. Motion passes unanimously. Sorry. Next item on the agenda, FY23 Consolidated Funding Application. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Consolidated Funding Application.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, this is something we do every year. The consolidated funding application federal grants are intended to help meet the additional needs of the most at-risk student groups. This is basically about approving all of our federal grants and dollars.
Questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Approval of Consolidated Funding Application. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item M, FY23 Carl Perkins Basic Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Carl Perkins Basic Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
The board has the Carl Perkins Basic Grant application attached to this item, and it gives you details of the initial budget for the program expenditures. This is something, again, we do every school year.
Questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item N, it's approval of another Carl Perkins Reserve Grant this time. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Carl Perkins Reserve Grant.
Heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
This is a competitive grant, and if we get this, the vast majority of this, about $47,000, would be used for new welders, new and additional welders for our welding room.
Questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY23 Math Implementation Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Math Implementation Grant Application.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
I'm going to ask Dr. Williams to add more information on this item and the next item. So, Dr. Williams?
Yes, this math implementation grant is a new grant specifically set aside by the Department of Education to focus on sustaining professional learning in our new math implementation with new curriculum materials. So this will be nice extra help in long-term professional learning instead of one-stop professional learning as we use new math materials in the future.
Questions? Ms. Agel?
Can you give us just an overview about what's different about the new math materials?
Well, first of all, Jamie Garner, our math curriculum coordinator, has done a really excellent job giving our teachers an opportunity to sample materials as we've been in a delay for math adoption for several years. And this year, pretty much across the board, our teachers have been piloting a math curriculum called IM, and these materials really are focused on conceptual understanding when it comes to math. And students, I know you all got to see this during your visits to elementary schools, students have had opportunities not just to work your traditional word problems, but to talk to each other and work through these problems and model these problems together. So it's been some much deeper conceptual learning in math concepts than they've had the opportunity to do before. So it's been some much deeper conceptual learning in math concepts than they've had the opportunity to do before.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is approval of the FY23 Math Implementation Grant, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is FY22 Summer Learning Camps Grant, Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Summer Learning Camps Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb, Dr. Borchers.
And I'll ask Dr. Williams to have a little more information on this as well.
This year, our summer learning camps will begin on June 1st and last for four weeks. Oak Ridge Schools did receive a waiver waiving two weeks of the summer camp, because our summers are so short with our modified year-round calendar. So we'll be holding four weeks of summer camp. At this time, we have approximately 400, a little over 400 students enrolled for summer camp K through 8 this year.
Ms. McLean.
I'm really excited that we've been able to include transportation. I think that will allow some of the kids that most need to come to this camp, that'll allow them to come, so, good job.
Thank you. Please cast your vote, approval of Summer Learning Camps Grant. Motion passes unanimously. We move next to items for information, but before we do that, the young scout sitting right back there, could you come up to the podium for a minute? You've been very diligent sitting back there, either drawing pictures of the board or taking notes, I'm not sure which. So you're working on a merit badge, I assume?
Yes.
Tell us your name and what badge you're working on.
My name is David Slusher, and I'm working on my communications merit badge.
And attending a board meeting or council meeting is part of that, correct?
Yes. You have to tend to take notes about topics that occur, and then tell your counselor about what you learned.
Great, and what troop?
Troop 45.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And come back. Maybe think about running for the board sometime, never know, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items for information, the FY23 Board Meeting Calendar, Dr. Borchers, you want to make any comments?
Yeah, we talked as an executive team, I know, shared with the board. We went and looked at what some of our other districts around us were doing as far as start time for board meetings. And we made a recommendation, and you'll see on that attachment, that starting Monday, August 1st, and all next year, our board meetings will start at 5:00. So, so we're going to move that up, and we feel that we're offering much of our, all of our board meetings online. It's a much easier format, and also for staff, we, we know our staff is working numerous evening events throughout the school year. And to be able to go right from work and right to the board meeting really is a benefit to, to all staff. So I think it'll be very well received, but yes, we'll start our meetings at 5:00, starting in August.
And I know Ms. Agel might have some comments, which we're certainly well-taken, that, you know, there may be some times where we have some board members that, this, and Ms. Webb is kind of one of them, but she is so flexible. But that could be an issue at some point in time, and we could be adjustable to that if we need to be. I think it's a good idea, and it certainly makes sense to, to do that. Enrollment and attendance reports, Mr. Lay.
Yes, sir.
As we conclude the school year.
Yes, as we conclude this school year. Our attendance hasn't looked bad, it's clear by the blue line, that we have not been dealing with COVID in the last few weeks, which is a positive. Our enrollment, if you compare our enrollment today to this time last year, or to the eighth enrollment period last year, we are still up 167 students, which has once again been nice growth for this year. The part that I found, once again, numbers are always interesting to look at, if you look at our differences, our enrollment changed from the seventh reporting period to the eighth reported period, reporting period by two students. So our enrolling and withdrawing, we had a slowdown for the last grading period. So will that continue? That's a great question, okay.
Any questions there? Finance report, we've about financed out, haven't we, for a period of time? Oh, sorry, Ben.
It's, it's my favorite question, but I always ask it because it's critically important, at least from my perspective, that the entire community appreciate this one thing. Either Dr. Williams or Jennifer, could you give us a, a good idea of the total amount of grants that have been acquired for the schools for the past year or for projecting next year, either one?
And that may be something we need to dig on, too, to get you an accurate.
And I'll tell you the reason I ask. I don't want anybody in our community or anywhere to just assume that all the programs that are being provided for the students, the, the activities that engage professionals, both in the school system and out, in order to provide a wonderful curriculum of a laundry list of subjects that students take required and, and the electives are really outstanding. But just as the summer program and other, these things are, so many of them are not required. The, the, the staff and superintendent, the board sees a need, hears the community, where can we get funding for that? And the outstanding staff at this school system goes through the work that's required to apply for grants. And if you've ever had to apply for one, it's not, it's not something you can do in a couple of minutes, a couple of months either, in, in some cases. It's a heck of a lot of work, and I want to ensure that all of that work is appreciated in the, the programs that are provided for the students. And so when these efforts are being made, I like to make sure that, that the folks that are doing that work get the appreciation from the board and the community, because it's a lot. Remember when I first asked that question and got the answer, it's a lot. And, and the community needs to appreciate that and needs to thank the superintendent, entire staff, everybody that's involved in trying to provide better services to meet the needs of the students. These aren't wants they're usually tackling, these are, these are basic fundamental needs, and nine times out of 10. So thank you for the outstanding staff that does the work to get the money, to provide the services that are needed by our students. And we are extremely happy to have such an outstanding staff to do that. And if they run into difficulty, they find the answers, they find the people to do that. So as I have always said in leadership studies and other stuff, no organization, including our board, we can't address the problem if we don't know about it. We haven't mastered telepathy yet, so until that time, students, parents, teachers, staff, if there is an issue, let us know. And we have an outstanding group of people here working with us that are not afraid to tackle whatever the issue may be. And so I want to give you all a huge thank you for your time and your efforts, those that are staying, those that are leaving, either way, thank all of you for the really outstanding work that makes our school system such a jewel in our country. Thank you.
And our, our federal programs budget, final budget for FY22 was 16.9 million.
There you go. That's just part of it.
Right. Some of it's carrying over until next year, but that was our final FY22 federal programs budgets. Yeah, COVID provided a lot of that, unfortunately, unfortunately, but yes.
Okay, old business, new business, communications, we just mentioned. I thought our graduation was one of the best that I've been to, the weather was perfect, I think. I think we actually had a flyover during graduation, that was the first as well. Mr. Colodny was telling me that we had 600 and something views going on, and four foreign countries were tuned in. So when we talk about millions watching, you know, we're getting there, we're getting, we're getting there. But appreciate, I know there's a lot of work that goes in, Alan, with your staff, getting that set up and taking it down, that's a tremendous amount of work that people don't realize, you know, they just show up and it's there, and then all of a sudden it's gone. So please thank them, and our technology people and so forth who, who make all that work up there. Couldn't do it without you all, and your folks doing their jobs as well, so it's greatly appreciated. Our next board meeting is June the 20th, I believe. School is winding down, but Oak Ridge Schools don't stop. Continue on, for those who'll be looking for some relaxation time, we wish you much, much of that as you can get. Please stay safe, and please stay healthy. We want you back in one piece, ready to continue the great things you're doing. We appreciate you being here tonight, thank those people that are watching. And we'll see you on, oh, you have a question, okay.
Which I figure is under items for discussion. Our policy states that if we do not receive the TEN Ready and T-CAP results by five days before the end of school, they don't have to count, have we received them?
We received EOC scores on Wednesday, and we received the second through eighth grade scores on Friday.
Is that a miracle?
Well, so does that mean the EOCs don't count for the seniors, because they were already out of school?
Probably not. All right, thank you, everybody, we stand adjourned.